Kalaz Khan is a show about war, obsession, colonialist occupation, and the many forms of violence those inflict. See the description for content warnings specific to this episode.
We have the potential here to end the war with Jovango and win a lasting peace.
Representative Mavis, it would be appreciated if you would come with us now.
What if these safety systems had some catastrophic failures? What if the attendees aboard were not as safe as they thought?
You suggest that murdering any number of civilians sounds like an idea that could come out of my mouth.
The eighty-six have no delusions that they might survive.
I can't send my squad in against Goliath again.
If we work together, I think we can stop the Sunverge.
Zandre, you had a horse trading scene in mind?
Yep, I would like to catch Fishy somewhere. Sorry for the pun, unintentional. Where can I find Fishy right now? What's a good place?
Probably his office. He spends a lot of time there these days.
Alright, so Zandre is going to approach, voices cane up and tap the door with it.
It's open.
Zandre opens the door.
Zandre, ah, it's good to see you. What happened? Are, like, gestures? I know some of the details, but they let you go? It's all good? I'm being vague about whether I'm talking about the hospital visit or the cop visit.
For now, seems I can continue my work unimpeded.
Okay, that's good to hear. Maybe after all this is over, we can go get some schnapps and celebrate.
Might be a plan. Zandre gestures to his seat and he says, may I?
Oh, please.
Sits himself down, fell by an onset of shallow coughs, which pass as quick as they come. The cane resting against his shoulder, he classes up at Fishy and just, you know, cuts through bullshit. I want to know if you have a contingency in case your proposal for reorganizing the voting structure does not go through, either by veto, by Fabrizio, or otherwise.
We want the resonance gun first and foremost. It's the most dangerous mission and we already have a little bit of experience with a prototype model of it. I think we are the best fit to deal with a weapon of that level of danger. That's as far as my contingency plan goes. I haven't really thought about votes. I haven't done vote math since we last collaborated, if I'm gonna be honest.
Well, it did turn out interesting last time.
We could do that again.
He chuckles and then that chuckle is interrupted by another cough, forcing him to stop, puts a hand on his chest. Perhaps.
But this time we'd have to go all in. You wouldn't be able to give one vote away. Especially not for the exact opposite of what we're trying to do. We need all five on a single direction.
Zandre nods and it's pretty clear that he understands these circumstances dire at their, dire as they are. Again, to reiterate, like, his expression, what you might be able to make of it is much changed from like the last time when he looked so fresh-faced, untouched by the realities of the war.
Just a stark contrast to Fishy who doesn't have any visible scars, but is very like there's probably like a kinship here in where we're at mentally. I don't know how to express that in scene, but it's there. What do you want voting-wise?
Zandre pauses a moment. Both of his hands are on like knob of the walking cane, leans forward, peers down at his feet. As if like he's looking for something inside of himself. Can I? Can I be absolutely candid?
Always.
If that's a risk that in this line of work, well, few might undertake. Truth is, I know what my squad wants. They made it very, very clear about their resolve, but personally, I don't see that as a good end to them.
Oh.
I'm conflicted, Fishy.
If you're implying what I think you're implying, I don't condone it.
I'm just trying to think about where the eighty-six end up in all of this. I know that the Goliath is a looming threat and I know that they have expressed a very zealous desire to play their part in mitigating that threat, but it just reflects with a personal feel, you see.
There's no reason anybody has to or should want to go out in a blaze of glory. I agree with you and I understand why this is difficult. I've always wondered in the back of my head, you know, where all the little devils live. If I was voted in because I had a good platform? Because I knocked on doors and I was honest with the people who answered them? Or because when they looked at the last survivor of my unit and saw a young kid that they thought, well, he shouldn't be out here. This is the easiest way to get him off the battlefield. And sometimes I wonder if that means they think their lives have less value because they think they should be on the battlefield. And it doesn't sit right. We should all get out of this alive, you and me both and our squads.
Zandre nudges his cane forward and then like leans back, adopting a more restful posture, laying it across his lap.
That's what I think, at least.
Next words I'm about to say might sound borderline seditious, but I think in this upcoming battle, there will be chaos that ensues. During which, there might be a prime opportunity for the tired, the battered, who are still rallied to take up arms. They might slip the leash, so to speak.
So should we, are you suggesting we put them somewhere far away from the battle?
Out of character, Zandre is suggesting that we put them somewhere in the chaos, put the eighty-six somewhere in the chaos. That they might be marked as AWOL. Maybe they died, shrugged.
So where would that be? Self-destruct, I guess? Or do you have a suggestion?
Either self-destruct or the command center and he's his eyes are like looking about as like he's kind of like sort of putting together a plan as he's thinking. Though, self-destruct might seem like the most vainglorious method if one were to and he air quotes with his eyebrows, go out in a so-called blaze of glory, perhaps.
Shaking head. So then we should it would be much better if we put the eighty-six on the command center so that they can't do that.
I guess the suggestive eyebrow waggle just went way, went right over Fishy's head.
Wait, okay, hold on.
He was implying that they could use an operation to attack the self-destruct module as a means to slip away.
Oh, and pretend to go out in a blaze of glory, but actually just
Fake their deaths.
Okay. Ah, okay, Gavin missed it, but we'll say Fishy got it. Okay, yeah. Then we should vote for self-destruct then. But we have to put all of our votes towards it.
I suppose that is the grim reality of the situation. I only have my credibility did not come out unscathed during that interview. I am down a vote.
What? Roughly pulling out a sheet of paper from this giant stack of papers all over the desk. Scribbling on it, okay, I gotta change the math.
Perhaps I should lead with that.
Okay, okay, I think this, this could still work. If we put four votes towards a thing, the max that anybody else could put votes towards a thing is five. Which means we could still get it through if any of them disagree. Because four and four would still be the top two. And four and five would also still be the top two. So this math works out. Okay, I think we're fine. And I feel like I owe you because I got what I wanted when we collaborated last time and you didn't get what you wanted.
Zandre takes a moment, nudge up his glasses, looks down. Well, perhaps it was an investment for a situation like this. I don't want to say that I planned it, but your support would be appreciated in this endeavor.
I'll see what I can do.
Zandre is going to push himself out of his seat. Well then, let's do the best we can for our people.
Yes.
And the citizens of DFS. And Zandre is going to excuse himself.
It sounded more like that was just an agreement, not any particular exchanging of supply points or anything like that in
No.
exchange for votes, yeah. Just wanted to double check.
Yeah, no, there is no supply that got exchanged here. It was just to see where the votes are going to land in which basket.
Okay, Snugs, make sure to write a new belief that Zandre has about Fishy. We'll catch up with that later once you know what it is. Red.
I had wanted to do a horse trading scene, but it's another one with Fishy.
Okay.
I think you come into the deli one day and Red's already there, waves you over.
Come here often?
Not often enough. Already has a sandwich. Join me?
Of course. Goes to order.
Mm-hmm.
Comes back with a nice big stack of meat between two loaves of bread.
Of cour- right, yeah, 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 right, a sandwich, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think Gishlak is insane?
No.
Are you sure?
I think Gishlak doesn't know what dirt tastes like.
I think you're right about that. I think that's very well put.
And that causes issues. Is that all you wanted?
No, I'm simply turning that over in my head. I think that helps explain a fair bit. Gishlak came to me proposing getting basically every civilian onboard Goliath kill.
No.
Yeah. Yeah. What do you figure happened with Zandre?
I didn't ask.
That's wise.
Well, I'm not the one who bugs the whole
I suppose that's true. I suppose that's true. Listen, you figure old Fabrizio is gonna let your proposal ride? Change the whole vote configuration?
Well, voting is what we do, right? So we should vote on how we vote, right?
Many revolutions have been tripped up by such procedure. I don't understand. I completely agree with you. I think that we should be able to do that and besides which, that I think your proposal is a good one. I just don't know if the good folk of the DFS are going to allow us to not stand on ceremony when the rubber finally hits the road.
Well, this is an unprecedented situation. We need to be able to we need to be able to have flexibility in the face of it.
I, I, again, I don't disagree. I just, I'm curious what the you know, if, if we don't get our way, then what's plan B? Just hit it with everything we got?
You mean, don't get our way in voting or don't get our way in beating this thing?
I'm not entertaining that option just yet, as tempting as it is. No, I mean, Fabrizio says, no, you can't vote that way. You have to vote the same way that we've always voted, regardless of whether it's an emergency situation. Rules are rules. Has that changed the arithmetic for you?
I suppose I'd offer up the two most dangerous missions to the two best suited for it. We're voting for attack. Like, I said that as much in the speech. We're all gonna vote attack. That's clear.
You're sure?
Are you gonna vote something else?
I, you have my full backing. I promise you that. Hand to God. I think you and I see very clearly what it is we need to do.
Then we'll have enough votes for the strategy.
All right.
But the targets. So long as the strategy is attack, these targets will get hit. We just don't know who is going where and that's an issue. And which is why I created the proposal.
So if you had your way, who would hit what? At least, most importantly.
I want to hit the resonance gun.
Why is that?
Terminal Company encountered a scale model of it in our last mission. And I think we're best suited for dealing with the big thing.
Experience, that makes sense.
We also are one of the more combat-heavy units. So dealing with something like a big gun is kind of our specialty.
Exactly. Exactly, see?
I imagine the farm upstate would deal with the AVI factory.
Sure, that makes sense.
Lab people and factories go hand in hand. Y'all could do the command setter, I guess. I'm just shooting shit right now, Red.
Sure, we're just two people having lunch together, that's all.
And then that leaves the eighty-six with the self-destruct and Blue Sky with honestly, I don't know what Blue Sky does.
Yeah. Gishlak.
Does that work with your? How does that differentiate from your assignments?
Hey.
You would have chosen.
You have basically saved me the trouble of being a bag of hot air, because I would have gotten up there and said exactly the same thing far less well than you did. I just wanted to make sure that our expectation of things lined up. I had every expectation that it probably did, but you know, it's worth an ask, over a sandwich.
And what do you want if the proposal doesn't go through?
Gestures at you, basically the exact same thing. I agree that we need to take out the most dangerous things with our most capable squads. If I had to point zero accountability at something, I'd probably say the pilots or the squad that's overseeing the pilots. They seem to, as with you and the gun, have some experience with the individuals responsible. That should give them more intelligence on the situation than they otherwise would.
I see.
It's all better, isn't it, when it all just lines up like this? Where you see the thing that needs to be done, you can draw a straight line from start to finish.
I wouldn't use that word. This sucks. Takes a big bite of sandwich. This whole thing sucks.
I don't disagree, this whole thing sucks. I just think, uh, how did I put it? Ceremony gets in the way more than it helps. Needs a chip.
What are you suggesting?
I'm shooting the shit over sandwiches. I'm just saying, if you gesturing with a chip, consider the way that Jovangal or hell even, NOR, operate without voting. It's a lot more efficient.
Is it? Well, see, what I understand is that they've got one person making all the decisions when they can't see the whole picture because they're just one person.
Well, it's not that you don't have advisors or that you have people around you to give you information. It's just a matter of making sure you've got the right people in those positions.
Yeah, but what makes you so sure you've got the right people?
Well, that is the weakness.
And with our system, we're able to, even if with the wrong people, create something that functions for the good of the society. Takes bite of sandwich.
Is that what we're doing here?
Is it?
Barely know. My first and last public office, I hope.
I've never read a book on policy and I didn't, I didn't start after I got elected. I just going by what I've learned through school and it's worked so far. I got us a ceasefire. We got us a ceasefire.
Yes, indeed. Eats another chip. Do you want your pickle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pickle was already gone by the time, the first thing.
Hang it, hang on, gets up, goes to counter, comes back with two more pickles.
Treasure. If you went out with a Jovangal squad going against, say, the codes, which one would it be?
Well, once again, I would have to lean on experience. Knowing as much as I know about Tempestia, it would be difficult to pick anyone else. Even when I know I can't trust her, because at least with her, I know that I can't trust her.
You can't trust her even through a ceasefire? Would you trust her through an alliance?
People like her always find a way of getting what they want, no matter what the circumstances around them. He says, eating a pickle.
What does she want?
She wants to be the one in charge. She wants to be the one telling everyone else what to do, so that Jovangal doesn't get themselves mired in problems like this. Pointing with half of a pickle. But she's good with a gun and her people follow her. What about you?
My constituents have been asking about some group called the Serpents.
Fanciful.
I don't know enough about them to. I don't know them the way you know Tempestia.
Well, if your electoral career continues, I hope that you never will have to.
In the novelization of this, Fishy almost says, and my relationship is much healthier. But then chooses not to say it. In that scene.
Cool.
Who do we got left? Another red scene, another Fishy scene, another Dr. Kane scene. Any of those gonna be speeches or are we fully into the horse trading at this point? Now that the stakes were set by Zandre and Fishy.
I think I might do another speech, but I couldn't wait a turn.
Dr. Kane, we haven't heard from you in a minute. What is she being up to?
I've been trying to think about how I want to frame this next scene and I don't feel like I have good ideas, unfortunately. I came into this session type wanting to be able to have like either that scene with Red or the one, one with Fishy that I decided not to have. And now I'm not really sure where to go from here, because I, I'm feeling a lot of friction with the process from the character perspective.
What process?
I don't think Dr. Kane believes in the legislature, like, straight up.
May I make a suggestion?
Please, I would love that.
What if you do a horse trading scene with Fishy and you frame it as Fishy finding Dr. Kane in a moment of frustration and contemplation somewhere?
I like this vibe.
Yeah.
So where does Dr. Kane go when she needs to think? That would presumably be a place that Fishy could come across her and see that she is unsettled.
I like the hangar base from the first episode.
Okay.
Is she
I don't know if that's
Yeah, you can absolutely do that. Is she working on something or is she just thinking?
The opening shot here is, the hangar is silent. There's nobody working here. After like the form of state's base got kind of exploded. There's just been a big shift in the needing to move, like things around, needing to I don't know, reorganize how, how all the assets are being stored and kept and this is not something that people are like prioritized. So it's this massive warehouse space with these like towering AVIs, but all the lights are off. So like you get this like low-level lighting for like, that is probably like emergency lighting. But it only illuminates like the first, I don't know, ten feet of like the height of this building. So you just get like the feet of these, these giant robots. The shot here is there's a table here, a desk, that had like stacks of papers that were neatly organized in folders and they've all just been pushed off the table. And like you said, that moment of frustration and I'm imagining them like falling through the air, like gliding down. Carried on a soft breeze that happens in a big enough room sometimes. The grumbling of the air conditioning vent or something.
The door opening is Fishy pops in.
Just to interrupt a second, Fishy, what brings you to the hangar? Unless you're going to address that.
Fishy's been practicing with the mech that Dr. Kane set up for him.
That's right. That's great. I forgot about that.
And Fishy brought it in for tune-up or to give feedback or something and wanted to check in on Dr. Kane while he was here.
Oh, Fishy, I didn't expect you to be here.
Bad time?
I know, it's a great time. It's, I'm totally free and there's nothing going on right now. What can I, what can I do for you?
Oh, I just, I was bringing in the mech. For a tune-up.
That's treating you well. Just like very nervous laughs, like the utterly mundane clashing with like the internal crisis.
Yeah, the Campy Collider's been pretty fun to drive, actually. It's interesting being on this side of the machine.
You get used to it pretty fast. At least that was my experience.
Are you doing alright?
I, so your, your whole deal, Fishy, right? You were appointed to take this position after your predecessor left because your entire squad was killed, right? That's, that's what happened. That's what I read in the dossier.
Yes.
And you still believe in this? You still are putting effort into this?
Into, well, I can't just run away.
No, no, neither can I. I don't think that's an option for anybody. You're still acting as if this matters.
What is this?
This and gestures to the, the AVIs, gestures to the campus, the legislature. Meaning the entirety of the DFS, meaning like the war, meaning Kalaz Khan and the forces of Kalazar, right? I'm just, you know something about you, I really admire your strength and I'm not sure sometimes if it's strength or naivety.
Look, I passed by, what, fifteen people on the way to your office? I don't know how to convince you what matters, but I do know that we're here. And that I've got people on the ground who need my support, who are here whether I like it or not.
But we could break the process. We could abstain from voting. We could prevent them from being on more missions. But you're still gonna send them into the belly of the beast.
I don't want to.
But you are, so obviously you want to enough.
I don't want a whole planet's blood on my hands. We have a saying, we have a lot of sayings. One I've been thinking about a lot since I enlisted was, if you save one life, you've saved the whole world.
But that's the thing, Fishy. I promised someone on my squad that I would help, I'd help keep them safe, I'd help get them out. And that's not possible anymore.
What do you mean?
Well, it's, it's war, Fishy. People die.
Fishy gets very somber for a moment and sticks his head out of the door and pulls over an aide and whispers to them.
If he needs a guy, don't let me keep you.
Oh, like one of Dr. Kane's aides.
Oh.
And then closes the door again. The other half of the saying is taking one life is like killing the whole world. And it does feel like that sometimes, every time. But I try to focus on the, the lives we're saving by preventing this planet from turning into glass.
I'm sorry, but I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to help your plan go through.
That's okay. And the aide comes back and has a bottle of liquor and a couple shot glasses and a candle.
Good, good, good.
Fishy sits down and clears a place on the desk, or the desk is cleared now.
Just have to like brush them papers away on the ground.
Yeah, places the candle on the desk. It's one of those like in a glass, so it, you don't need to stand or whatever. And lights it, or has you light it, because he probably doesn't carry a lighter with him. Pours us each a shot of the liquor and says, tell me about them. The director in me wants to zoom out from there of
Yeah, no, I like that.
Dr. Kane crying and talking about them and Fishy crying and we're all seeing it through the window of the office. Like through the blinds or something.
Yeah, no, I like that. Yeah, no, I like that. That's enough for me.
Good scene.
I know I already said that, but. Red or Fishy, you two are the two left with things to do before we vote. Sounds like an art film.
Sounds like a indie RPG. I could do a speech.
Sure.
Fishy's back at the podium a couple days later. Zandre is back in session. We were interrupted previously and I want to reiterate that I think no matter what missions we take in dealing with this Goliath, each of our squads should pair up with a Jovangal squad, Jovangalian squad. And work together with them to take down whatever our respective targets are. I encourage each of you to reach out to Jovangalian squads to work with on this endeavor. And since the last moment of silence was interrupted, I would like to call for another one. In memory of not just our fallen, but the fallen of Jovangal and Kalazcon alike.
Is Dr. Kane still reading her book?
Not this time.
What's Red's reaction?
Same as before, quiet, measured.
Gishlak?
They no longer have all of their big sheets of papers and schematics on their iPad. They're actually just here to listen. Quite honestly, they've realized whatever attempts they've made to get leverage this session have not gone well, so they'll respect the moment of silence.
And Zandre?
Same as before, Herman stare, but I think he does take a moment to close his eyes thoughtfully. Not only for the ones who gave their lives in this conflict, but those who, whose futures are uncertain.
The moment passes.
Thank you. And gets off the podium, walks back to his seat.
So everyone will get a new belief with Fishy and we've also got some beliefs. More beliefs with Fishy from the earlier horse trading scenes.
Yeah, I completed a connection clock.
I had a feeling that that might have happened with the amount of scenes Fishy was in. Red, what were your two new beliefs? And what question do you have for Fishy?
Well, I'll ask my question and then I'll figure out my, my new beliefs, but I'm gonna ask my, my second, a, a question about my second belief, which is Fishel is a politician and worse, he's a very good one. Someone already asked you what you see your future as. But do you see yourself, uh, like now that we've gone through all of this and now that you've done what you need to do, like, do you still see yourself as a soldier who is operating like a politician or do you see yourself as a politician now?
Definitely see myself as a politician now.
Is that good? Is that value neutral? Like, how, how do you feel about?
From whose perspective?
I guess just from your own. Like, how do you feel about that?
I don't think Fishy realizes. I think this is gonna be a big surprise when he goes back to his squad at the end of his term. And that'll be interesting to be up a lot for sure.
I think that colors my two new Fishy beliefs, the first of which is Fishy's got good intentions and the second one is one day Fishy's gonna wake up and realize what he's become.
Damn.
Dr. Kane, what are your two new Fishy beliefs and question if you hit that threshold?
I have not, surprisingly. I wrote, does continuing with business as usual save lives or leave more people dead? I wish I had a certainty that it does. And secondly, I've heard stories about people who could change the world with sheer force of will. If anyone could do it, it might just be him.
Zandre, you should have two new beliefs with Fishy and possibly a question.
His beliefs are, he has a flexible mindset during times of crisis. And Fishel and I bear the scars of this war, but his ideals seem unblemished by it. And then I guess my question would be, has Fishel's ideals been changed in any way and does he realize it?
I think yes, cause there was that moment where he could have had the DFS evacuate the planet. You know, spend eight drive clocks, let that happen. And he chose not to. Like tha- that was the moment to succeed in his drive. Instead, he chose honesty. Or that drive came in conflict with his need to be honest as much as possible. Or a hundred percent of the time. And he chose to be honest instead of finishing his drive. So like, that was a major turn for him. That I think is why he's more of a politician than a soldier now. Cause a soldier would have, you know, cut throats.
Very interesting.
And Gishlak, you should have one new belief about Fishy.
Yeah, mine is, I'm worried Fishy isn't thinking past the moment the ceasefire ends. That's already asked a question.
It's not gonna end.
Snugs, once your, uh, new belief about Fishy from after the question is ready, let us know and we'll, uh, catch back up with you. But in the meantime, Red has one last scene.
I sure do. Where does Gishlak live?
They have a semi-permanent like hotel room. Not the fanciest suite, but like a hotel suite with like.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
What if it's some of the nicer student dorms?
I was thinking about that. I feel like Blue Sky would have seen them around more, but I also do like them being.
University, right? Because this loca- the, the legislature is not near Hestial.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. They have taken like an RA's room on a dormitory floor.
And all their aides in like adjacent normal students' rooms.
Yes. Most of their aides, like, they were just like, well, you can find housing wherever. A couple of them ended up in a similar situation, but like they don't live with their aides, you know?
Sure, 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 sure.
Work with them.
Okay, I think you come back to your room one day to discover Red's broken into it and is still inside.
Oh my god. Gishlak kind of gabs and reaches to their belt where they've been keeping like a little taser. What the fuck?
Doors pulled open, doors hanging open, sound of shuffling. There's gotta be something, there's gotta be something in here sitting there.
If you're looking for my dirty laundry, it's already been aired to the entire goddamn planet.
Oh, you're back, you're back, okay. Comes into the room. Hi, sit down, sit down, sit down. I was hoping you'd get here.
You need to get out of my living.
Just a cou- couple of questions, I'll, I'll be out of here, no worries. Do you wanna drink?
No.
Goes to your fridge.
I think it is one of those incredibly sad fridges.
It's like mustard and only mustard.
Yes, there is mustard, there is a bag of grated cheese. There is a gallon jug of milk that has like maybe a half a cup left in it. And is like a week past its expiration and that's it.
Oh, buddy.
Grated cheese, cheese and mustard.
Well, just sort of awkwardly closes the fridge and leans up against it. Listen, I can't help but notice.
I still have my taser out for the record.
Of course, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't help but notice you didn't, um, follow through and make a speech about that, that great idea that you had.
It seems that other people have plans that are making more forward motion.
Well, certainly they're gonna be.
My attempts to persuade people have not gone well. And I am working from a position of weakness and I'm accepting that.
That's loser talk right there.
Yeah.
Gishlak, what are you, what are you doing here?
Mostly I sleep. I get up and I go back to work.
And what is your?
Oh, you think our job affords us downtime, luxury time?
No, 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 I mean, what are you doing? Here at the you, you belong on television.
Yes, I do. That is where I have found myself most comfortable.
So why are you here?
You mean here on Logel?
Yeah, as, as, as a legislator. What are you doing?
Did you not listen weeks ago when I told you my entire life story?
No, I.
Do you think that there wa- that I wasn't telling the truth?
No, not the slightest, absolutely not. Do you know why? Cause you're on television. And no one, if they can help it, says the truth on television.
Gishlak is just C thing. I thought I saw another pragmatist. I thought I saw someone else who understood how the wheels of power work and you do, don't get me wrong. What do you even do with it? You break into a colleague's house over a petty squabble. You make threats with violence. Always imply, never, never actual, but we all know there's blood on your knives. And I have to work with you. I have to play nice with you. I have to, I have to negotiate with you and you never show any respect in return. You never understand that the appearance of things matters just as much as the substance of them.
If that were true, I wouldn't be wearing a tie. I'd be, I'd be in an Ovi suit day in and day out.
Yeah, well, you're probably better suited for that anyway. Get out of my place.
Gets up and goes, stops on the door and like looks back and says, I mean it though. You are better like this when you're on TV. If you were like this all the time, then maybe I'd have some respect for you.
Yeah. You can go fuck yourself, slam door.
That sounds like scene.
PB, you good?
Oh yeah, I'm good.
Okay, good, good, good. Just making sure.
Uh huh, yeah, you good?
Yeah, good scene.
Yep, just you really got under their skin and also like I've been looking at the vote math, I have no way to get anything that I want here, so. You know, when you can't get what you want, you lash out.
Yeah, I, you know, that. I, I thought that scene would go one of two ways and it, it definitely went one of the two ways.
Wha- what was the other way you thought it could go?
Of more of like a breakdown of like, oh, I can't get anything, nothing is working, please help me. And then Red, Red magnanimously, magnanimously says, oh, well, sure, I said your idea was good. We can still make it happen. Let's just do this and this and this. But I like this.
I should have opened with that.
Is that the version where they end up kissing at the end of the scene?
Save it for you, three.
Alright, Red, get another belief with Gishlak.
That completes my, yeah. My three Gishlak beliefs are, Gishlak seems to be driven to distraction. Gishlak has their head in the clouds, complimentary. I think Gishlak might actually be insane. Here's, here's my question. Did you really mean everything that you said when you got up and gave that speech after everything was exposed?
Oh, that is a yes, and there is a level of self-deception there of look, a part of it is, like Red absolutely reads them to rights of like, they like to be on TV, they like to be powerful, they like to be seen. They like to be in the halls of power and they will never admit that to themselves.
Sure, sure. I can even imagine thinking like, oh no, I'm exposed. Oh no, all the spotlights are on me. How terrible, I guess I'll have to give a speech. Right?
Yeah, no, that was very much them making the best of a bad situation and kind of eating it up.
Right, right.
Like, yeah, there was a part of them that thrived in that, but now they're, now they're having to deal with the actual longer-term consequences of that of like no one respects them anymore. It's a lot harder to turn ears. So, yeah, everything they said there is true about their beliefs about themselves. And also they are full of contradictions that would tear them apart if they ever acknowledged them.
Good thing they're never going to acknowledge them.
I've had opportunities to and I've said, no, thank you. I'm good like this, actually. I don't need to go to therapy.
Oh, beam saber.
Legislators will literally propose causing mass death of civilians rather than go to therapy.
Yep. My new belief for Gishlak is Gishlak could be great if they would just give in to their vitriol.
Gishlak thriving on Fox News.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just, I just need to pivot to the right.
I mean, I mean, I think you get what you want.
Yeah.
You become the token Jove. Oh, god.
So to wash that out of our mouths. It's time for voting.
No, you know what? You have to re-defect back to Kalazar. That's what I think.
I, I.
Alright, no, 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 excuse me, back to Jovangal.
I was really thinking for a while about how I could justify defecting to Kalazar.
I think it's still possible, yeah.
I mean, if there's, if there's two drive clocks between the legislators who are willing to give, help Gishlak get into Kalazcon permanently.
We could, we could muster that. Get on the phone.
Yeah, me and my one total tick I've gotten is drive clocks.
I'm DJ Khaled on the phone getting drive clocks. We gotta get, we gotta get this person out of here.
God, the, the idea of you all contacting your, your constituents desperately the way you did to get the ceasefire, but this time it's to get Gishlak out of the DFS.
This is the climax of the show. This is what we've all been working towards. Anyway.
So, it's time to vote. Fishy, is this the time when you bring up and get shot down?
Yeah, I, something about I suggest we vote on whether or not we're going in the order of most dangerous to least dangerous mission or tier hold trust order.
Representative Fishel. That is not how the legislature works. We must follow procedure to maintain the strictures of our democracy. It's important, even in these harsh times.
I'm going by procedure, I'm suggesting a, a change.
Yes, but such changes to the voting structure of the legislature must be taken up to the Ministry of Voting and Jurisdiction.
We're in the middle of a war.
And that is all the more reason that we maintain our procedure and the discipline therein. So now, we shall vote for the strategy for the Hestial Subcommittee's attendant squads. Out of curiosity, what's everyone's reaction to that? Fishy?
I'm fuming.
Zandre?
I think Zandre kind of read the winds and knew that this is how it was gonna go. He studied law. He knows that there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape that would be infringed upon if we just threw everything out the window. I think he does pay Fishy a sympathetic glance though.
Gishlak?
A little bit of satisfied smirk, just the satisfaction that a teacher's pet gets when they see another teacher's pet get something very, very wrong in front of the entire class.
How could they?
Who said you were teacher's pet?
It's a metaphor. I'm not saying you're the teacher's pet.
No, no, who said you were teacher's pet?
I'm teacher's pet to parliamentary procedure.
Okay.
Red is not surprised, but very sympathetic.
Dr. Kane?
Hey, this book is looking pretty good right now.
What is on the cover of this book?
I don't think it's anything indecent if that's what you're asking.
No, no, I, I'm genuinely curious about what Dr. Kane is reading. Just cause we've cut to her reading this book so many times that I would like to know what is on the cover, cause trashy books tend to have interesting covers.
It's a fantasy pirate novel with also dragons, so we get like someone riding a dragon over a fleet of pirate ships and there's cannons and it's, it's titled something, something a little bit trashy too, like a
Tamarere? Sorry, that was rude.
The Dragon Riders of the Pirate Sea.
Exactly, exactly. Like literally just the most boring shit. Like, is it something you would literally find at a thrift store? Is, is how I have.
Book one of the Buchanista saga.
Exactly, exactly.
God, I would have ate that shit up in high school.
Right?
Time to vote for strategies. Who has a proposal?
Red proposes attack.
Does anyone have any alternative proposals?
I would like to propose liaise.
Huh, I was wondering if anyone was gonna take that option. Okay, so in Discord, put a one for attack or a two for liaise. And let us know once you have put a sufficient number equal to your votes.
Ready.
I'm ready.
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 Alright, hit enter.
Shocking.
So, Dr. Kane spends her two votes on liaising while everyone else votes to attack. Dr. Kane, I'm guessing you're still reading your book?
Yeah, this was, I think, mostly symbolic and knowingly futile. I don't think she expected anything else.
Did anyone have any, uh, notable reactions that they want to bring forth to liaise even being brought up?
Quiet, impassive.
I told Fishy what I was doing beforehand.
I gave my reasons why I disagreed. And then we got busy mourning.
Important too.
Gishlak or Zandre?
Gishlak is mostly just thinking like, i- if we had more time, maybe, but we don't have time.
Zandre kind of read the winds and was like, yeah, that would be an uphill battle.
Time to vote for the priorities. Does anyone have a priority they would like to suggest?
I'd like to propose Terminal Company attacking the Resonance Gun.
I'm proposing that the eighty-six go after the self-destruct module.
And is that as an attack or a different method? I guess destroying it would be attacking, so.
Ah, either destroying it or sabotaging it.
Yeah, I mean, within, within the bounds of the mechanics, it would fall under attacking.
Yep.
Any other proposals?
I will propose that Blue Sky Endowment liaise with the civilians or it's a rescue mission for civilians within Goliath. I think that would fall under liaise.
Yeah, that sounds right.
So liaise with trapped civilians. So liaise with trapped civilians in Goliath?
I propose the farm upstate liaise.
Who?
Any thoughts?
I wasn't gonna suggest anything because I don't have a, a good idea here.
Maybe they should rescue civilians from Goliath.
I got the impression that was liaise only nominally.
Well, when you choose your detail, it doesn't have to be a specific squad. You can have a specific objective instead. So, you know, liaise with the goal of doing X.
Liaise with the goal of doing extraction.
Extract who?
So like out, out of character, a lot of the reason I've been hesitant to like try and put forward like an actual, I don't know, goal or, or specific mission here is because like the farm upstate is in a little bit of a tenuous situation right now.
Sure.
Just being between recordings, trying to figure out what their next step is, like what the fictional state even is following their previous mission. And as a result, it's, I don't know entirely what I could even suggest for them here. So I almost wonder if it would be better for you not to suggest anything for them and they're just gonna get put on a generic attack mission.
Are you okay with that?
As a player? Totally. Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
I do think that's unfortunate given the conversation that Kane and Red had.
I don't disagree, but I, it's been a mess scheduling wise and also life wise for everyone on that team.
Sure.
So like, I, I also don't really feel like that's.
Okay.
The proposal can still go forward and then no one can vote for it. Unless Red has something else that he would prefer to prioritize potentially.
Zero accountability unless someone else reprioritizes, then we'll get what they want just from the strategy. So I'm not terribly worried. So no, I, I'll just, I'll withdraw that. We can keep that in the recording or as not, however, however best it works.
All right, so we have three potential priorities. Only two of them will go through. One is Terminal Company attacks the Resonance Gun. Number two is the eighty-six attacks the self-destruct system. Number three is Blue Sky liaises with the trapped civilians. So put in chats, one, two, or three, a number of times equal to the number of votes that you get. Remember that if you've drive clocks, they can be spent one to one as an additional vote after the votes are tallied.
Ready.
Ready, ready.
Ready.
You may hit enter. All right, so that is three for Blue Sky liaising. Four for the eighty-six attacking self-destruct and two for Terminal Company attacking the Resonance Gun. So the way those votes broke down is Gishlak voted for Blue Sky's liaise mission. Red voted for Terminal Company's attack and Blue Sky's liaise. Fishy voted for the eighty-six's attack on the self-destruct sequence with both of his votes. Dr. Kane voted for Terminal Company's attack and the eighty-six's attack. And Zandre voted for the eighty-six's attack and Blue Sky's liaise.
You did it again.
Kevin, is that why you didn't vote for your own thing?
Yeah, well, we made a deal and I, I said like three times, don't split your vote.
Well, that's why I have a drive clock.
Oh, that's why you have a drive clock.
Ouch.
Are you spending a drive clock? Is that what you mean? I guess is anyone spending a drive clock to change this?
To be clear, which two are winning right now?
Eighty-six's attack and Blue Sky's liaise with four votes and three votes respectively.
I mean, unless anyone really doesn't want Blue Sky to liaise, that seems fine. Terminal Company could still attack.
I'm all good. I'm just surprised. Yeah.
I think I'm happy with this. Sorry, not sorry.
I'm surprised something I proposed actually got enough votes.
It's a good idea.
Let's see if Blue Sky can actually do it.
They're good at liaising. That's the whole thing.
So let's find out what everyone's reactions to how the voting went. Dr. Kane?
Turns a page in the book.
I had a feeling that would be your response. Red?
Gathers up what little he has and heads out. He needs to make a phone call, get things moving.
Fishy?
Look, Zandre, we need to talk. This can't keep happening. Like, fool me once.
Zandre stands up, wobbles a little bit as he does with his cane. He looks up at the ceiling and in a very ominous fashion says, it won't. And begins.
Oh man.
Gishlak?
Gishlak has similarly to Red pulled out a phone and is dialing the number for Cry Havoc.
That it will be it. Fabrizio Katana bangs their gavel three times and says, this marks the end of the legislature session for the Hestial Subcommittee regarding the Goliath. Thanks for listening to Kalaz Khan. This episode was edited by me, Austin Ramsey. You can find my work at austin-ramsey.itch.io. Sound balancing for this episode was done by Christine Blight. You can reach her for voice acting at cvblight@gmail.com. The show's music is by Devon Nelson. You can find them on all social media at Devon Decibel. If you'd like to support Kalaz Khan, you can find us on Patreon at patreon.com/kalazkhan. Please tell your friends about the show too. Remember, all glory to Kalazar.